Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move for a vote for the amended bill. Go ahead, take a roll. Go ahead.
Yes. Clearly, there are multiple perspectives. But I think that we need to deal with the amendment because the most critical piece is that we provide those windows for appeal for our residents. I introduced the initial legislation to do just that months ago. And I've been struggling with our delay in moving through the special process. But again, the most critical issue is that we give residents of Allegheny County that pay taxes on their property an opportunity to have this addressed in a construction and that would have mattered.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no one else, I mean, I'd like to make a comment at this point in time. I mean, these special assessment appeal meetings have been painful, to say the least. The testimony that has been given in these appeal hearings and the testimony is just appalling. There's just one incongratiable truth here. The county basically did cook the books with regards to the assessment appeals. Again, those aren't my words. They're the words of Judge Hershberg. He ended up saying this because there has been litigation over the assessment appeals process, and the evidence clearly shows that the Office of Property Assessments manipulated sales data, and they did so in a fashion that resulted in artificially high property values resulting from appeals. Simple fact, period. There isn't a truth that anyone should be comfortable with. It's certainly not a truth that I'm comfortable with or with the committee is comfortable with, which is why I established the Special Committee on Assessment Practices last September to review this situation in depth. The committee has convened five times since early October and was showing much of the same evidence that the court was showing. I introduced this bill on December 6th, and the public noticed that it would be under discussion by the Special Committee, which was sent out on January 11th. The administration took no meaningful part in any of the discussions with the Special Committee and never offered any comment on this issue or bill up until yesterday. So if we talk about the 48-hour rule, the 48-hour rule is coming into effect unfortunately because the administration obviously failed to work with us and failed to notify us and failed to talk about this before yesterday when this has been out there for some time. Until four months after the Special Committee was created, until almost two months after the bill was introduced, and until nearly two full weeks after the administration and public were notified that the bill was going to be discussed in committee. Now, at the 11th hour and 59 minute, the very same administration that presided over the book cooking has suddenly decided that it's theoretically legal concerns about a proposed remedy. That's ridiculous. Let me be blunt here. I don't care. Because this administration put us where we are, either the thought of cooking the books was legal, or they knew it was wrong and they did it anyway. There is no third alternative. Either way, their conclusively demonstrated that their opinions on how assessment appeals should work are suspect, to put it gently. The ordinance does first two things. First, it creates the special appeal windows for the 20 and 22, 23, in order to account for those appeals that there have been or may have been. And secondly, it's hopefully going to tell the B Part Board to follow the orders issued by the courts, that at a later date, obviously. So now, at this point in time, I think we have an important decision to make. I mean, obviously, we heard testimony that, I mean, turned my stomach that some of the stuff that was admitted in these hearings. And I don't understand why the county would allow this to go on. I mean, it undermines the integrity of government. I mean, how we got here and how we allowed it to continue for so long. And the orders that were given by staff. I just find that, I'm only one member of the board, but I know there's other members of the board that feel the same way as how appalled they were at hearing it. I mean, obviously, we're still not done with the committee hearings, and we still have other things to do. But it's just, like I said, it's just irreconcilable that all of this occurred. And it bothers me that it happened under, I mean, I know we're looked, secondly, I mean, we're sort of given a backseat, obviously, the administration, county council. I mean, we're not viewed as the same, obviously, in the same light as them. But this still happened on our watch, and it's disturbing to hear what exactly, how the taxpayers were basically, I mean, taking advantage of it. It really bothers me. So I just think, obviously, that this is a step to do the right thing. Obviously, this doesn't rectify everything that we heard in those hearings or we heard in those meetings. But again, it's a step in the right direction, and I believe it's the right thing to do for all of the taxpayers of Allegheny County. But the fact that it got to this point, it was a huge mistake. It should have never have gotten to this point. This council shouldn't be here tonight, having to do this. But yet, we are. And, I mean, it's the tough decisions like these that need to be made. But it's the fairest decision for every resident of Allegheny County. So, thank you. That's all I have to say. Jared, will you take a roll call vote?
On the motion to amend, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The amendment passes.
Thank you. We'll not have any liaison reports this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving. Yeah, there you go. Councilman Walton, thank you for keeping me honest.
As amended.
Okay.
It's tough sometimes.
I realize that, especially when I'm out of sorts. So, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other, no other discussion? So Jared, please take the roll.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
Thank you. We'll not have liaison reports this evening. Anything?
Yeah. Last Thursday, the Sports and Exhibition Authority met. I had sent an email through our staff to the members of council. Just want to make sure that you did see that and let you know that I want you all to know exactly what is going on in the SEA. So, thank you for that. And that's all.
President Katina, just wanted to thank all the members who were able to attend the ALAM legislative reception last week. There was a number of county council members there, but also a tremendous amount of local municipal leaders. Thank you all for attending. We appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing no one else, we'll go to new business ordinance resolutions, 12561-23.
An ordinance directing the referendum question regarding the amendment of the Home Rule Charter of Allegheny County in order to amend Article 3, Section 6A, an existing provision relating to seeking multiple county elected offices simultaneously, be placed on the November 7, 2023, general election ballot sponsored by Councilmember Dewar.
That will go to Government Reform, 12562-23.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2023, submission number 1-23, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Budget and Finance, New Business motions, 12563-23.
A motion of the Council of the Allegheny County authorizing the settlement of the pending action against the Council of Allegheny County and Allegheny County in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania, styled Buka v. Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and Office of County Council, Allegheny County, CA #2, Colton 20, CV 00669, sponsored by Councilmembers Paul Mary and Katina.
At this point in time, we are going to take a brief recess to talk about pending litigation, and we'll reconvene in the back room, right here.
Damn. Really impressive rendering that you presented tonight with respect to your son. That was, I was very moved by what you had to say. And, yeah, yeah. Oh, I, you know, I mean, I know what you're saying. Well, yeah. What's that?
On the motion, correct. Nobody's moved to approve of the motion.
Lots of chicanery, to say the least.
At this, at this point in time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Councilman Paul Mary, would you like to make the motion, would you like to make motion 12563-23? It's the settlement motion.
You want me to read it?
No, let him read it.
No, you don't want me to read it? Thank God, no, okay. I may, I make a motion.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? Jared, please take roll.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Thank you. Eyes 13, noes two. The motion passes.
Thank you. 12564-23.
Motion of the Council of Allegheny County censoring Councilmember Bethany Hallam for conduct detrimental to county council, specifically her actions during the January 5, 2023 meeting of the Allegheny County Jail Oversight Board, sponsored by Councilmembers DiMarco and Macy.
Councilman DiMarco.
Yes, Mr. President. I introduce this censor motion to censor Councilmember Bethany Hallam for conduct detrimental to county council in representing county council, the jail oversight board meeting, with the comments she made regarding Judge Housie. And when called out by Judge Housie, she had an opportunity to just apologize or say anything, but she doubled down. I just think that the behavior is beneath the dignity of our office, and I think needs to be handled accordingly. And what we do outside of county council business is completely different. So, there was no censor motion offered for her tweet saying, "F yeah, they burned a police car," or calling for riots if elections didn't turn out properly. We all have our First Amendment rights. However, in this particular case, I just think that that behavior is beneath the dignity of someone on county council. And, you know, I don't understand, you know, why it persists. I mean, we've had former President Judge Kim Clark, you have Warden Harper, you have Judge Housie. And the funny thing was, she was asking about personnel matters in an active police investigation, which just as we had to take in recess for executive session to go back and talk about a personnel matter. You can't talk about these things in public session. And Judge Housie was just trying to move this thing forward. I mean, Ms. Hallam is a colleague of mine. We've gotten along for the most part over the last three years, though we differ in opinion. But, I mean, I just, in a recent Board of Elections meeting here, you know, she and I, she voted to take and not certify, you know, 12 precincts or 12 voting polls because the judge hadn't ruled on them yet. And she displayed that she was fine from a behavior standpoint there. I just think if you want to solve a problem, you have to be able to work with someone. And I don't think calling them names, particularly a sitting judge, is the right way to go. Ms. Hallam is up here because she has earned this position. I believe Judge Housie has earned his. So that's why I've offered this motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made.
No, I guess not.
Is there discussion at this point in time? Obviously, Councilmember DiMarco opened discussion, but is there any other discussion at this point in time? Councilman Bekowski.
A subject that's come up from time to time in our meetings has been how to deal with personnel matters and disciplinary matters. And in my training, what I was taught to do was to look at how similar situations had been handled prior, and whether actions that I would take would be consistent. So, for example, whether in the recent past, have there been occasions where members of council have used vulgar language in a public meeting? And then to compare the types of disciplinary actions that were taken to ensure that there's consistency. You know, for example, if in one case, an individual, a single time, used a single word, and as reported in the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, in a hushed voice. And then compare it to other recent occasions where members of council used a vulgar language in a quite loud voice repeatedly. And to compare whether we are treating these cases similarly. Also, I was trained to look at the proximate circumstances of the disciplinary incident. For example, is there anything proximate to the occasion that would indicate that a protected class was affected? For example, was there racially charged language used surrounding the incident? Discussions such as Jim Crow or the number of jelly beans in a jar, things that, to a reasonable person, based on a preponderance of the evidence, might indicate that some type of bias differentiated the two different forms of treatment. Now, I know the county council has yet to go through their official training. However, I felt that, since we have discussed this repeatedly, that I should at least offer the advice and training that I have received as a member of management.
Thank you. Councilman Dewar.
President Katina, thank you. So, I will be, if we are indeed voting on this tonight, I will be abstaining. I feel like this is certainly a decision that should have been discussed further, and my colleagues should have been given time to, and us as a collective whole should have been given time to discuss this in committee. I feel rushing this to the, rushing this to a decision on the floor is, you know, a bit headstrong. And I know, given if, you know, mine was eventually pulled, but I would have liked if, you know, I know people have been comparing my potential censure prior, I would have been like to be afforded that if my censure would have continued to go forward, my potential censure would have continued to go forward. So, I will be abstaining tonight for that reason, insofar as that I just felt that whether a yes or a no vote, I would have liked to see us discuss this more holistically as a council to talk about, you know, the conduct of one member, but also the conduct as a whole going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Councilman Klein?
I, you know, you might think that common sense would dictate what would be a censorable, a censorable act or a censorable behavior. But that is not at all clear to me, based on my experience here in council, and maybe even more largely considering this matter. I mean, I have this innate feeling that a motion of censure is kind of nonsense, kind of, you know, meaningless. I don't know what the implications are, the impact. And I would, you know, echo what Mr. Bekowski said in terms of, so what is the standard? And that is not at all clear to me. So, I will, I will be voting not to censure.
Councilwoman woman Nakareti-Chapkus.
I would just like to agree with councilmembers Bekowski and Klein, and agree with them as well. There's no consistency, and we can't just certainly pick and choose when this issue comes up. So for that, I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilman Macy?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Members of council. I could see a clear difference between someone using vulgar language or using profane language in a discussion when the issue gets a little heated. However, I believe attacking or name-calling another person, especially someone that's an elected official, there is no respect, there's no decorum there. And so I can see there's a difference. It has to stop somewhere. We do have our rights, our freedom of speech, but my goodness, we also should act like professionals. So even though this particular vote may go down, the issue has been brought to the attention of the public. And it's amazing how we all get tarred with the same stick. When I'm in my district, people will say, "What the heck's," well, they use stronger language, "what the heck's wrong with you people down there?" Well, it's not me, and it's not Paul Klein, it could be other people. No. But that's what's happening. People were looking at us because of our actions in professional surroundings and public meetings as a joke because we're not using respect and decorum and council rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilman Fatoulas.
Okay, thank you. Well, try to make the long story short. The first time I actually saw it was on Twitter, and quite frankly, do you believe everything you read? Sometimes you don't. Then I saw a video, so I wanted to believe, well, I saw the video, so I guess it must be true. And I thought to myself, well, that was pretty horrible. But sometimes people say things that they don't really mean, and I was actually waiting for Bethany to apologize. And if she did, I would certainly give her that chance to do so myself, because everybody deserves a second chance. That hasn't happened yet, and you still have a chance, by the way. And my other thought was, you know, I had co-sponsored this at a while, and I withdrew my name because I realized that maybe it wasn't the right thing to do at the time because it didn't happen here. It happened on the jail board, and if they thought it was so horrible, maybe they should be the one to censure Ms. Hallam, not us, for that reason. It really doesn't incur that happened on this board against us. So, I mean, I'm no angel. I dropped the F-bomb on a guy one time myself, so, but I apologized on Channel 4 News the next day for it, and I was truly sorry for my use of words, but not for my convictions. And I believe the same with her. It was a poor choice of words, but her convictions and her steadiness to save the people in the jail, I applaud that, okay? So, yes, I think you did a good thing, but your use of words should be reversed and apologize to the judge, say, "Your Honor, Judge, I didn't mean it, even though I really did." You know what I mean? Well, I'm talking about, not necessarily the words, but the fact that I care so much about the jail. And for that reason, you know, I'm not going to vote yes, I'm going to vote no, because I think that may be the right thing at this point to do. Thank you.
On the motion. Counsel, there's still people talking. Thank you. Councilwoman Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, President Katina. So I agree with Councilman Bekowski and Councilman Klein, and even Councilman Fatoulas, surprisingly. So, not on the apology part, but the part that we have seen this happen on our own body, our own legislative body, and nothing has happened due to that? And so we're going to go outside of that body to try to censure one of our members for something she did outside of this body, when we haven't even done that for the disrespect, if you will, that's happened in this body. So I will be of no vote as well. Thank you, President Katina.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilman Dewar.
Just a quick follow-up, President Katina, you know, of my first remarks. For me, one of the things that I want to talk about in committee, and which we've had it for a time, is the distinction between individual council members' conduct on this body and when a council member is representing the body as a whole on a board. So, I represent county council on the ALAM board significantly less controversial than the jail oversight board, no doubt. But one of the things I was talking with the co-sponsors of this bill about, when they introduced it, was that notion of representing a whole instead of the individual. So, when we're sitting up here in these seats, we're representing, you know, we're representing our districts, but we're representing ourselves as well as individuals, as individual council members of our districts. When I'm representing myself on the ALAM board, when Councilwoman Hallam is representing as your designee on the jail oversight board, she's representing, in my opinion, all 15 members. So, while some members of this council might see this censure coming forward as, you know, a bit unorthodox, given that it happened outside of this body, I would argue that, you know, that notion of representing the whole, especially of this body, of everyone, you know, it wouldn't be completely unfounded for it to be introduced. Once again, I wish that this would have been further discussed amongst us collectively as a whole in a much less emotionally charged setting than this in committee, where we could have come to hopefully a more amicable agreement. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Filagi.
Thank you, President Katina. And I would like to echo Councilman Dewar's comments, his previous comments and these. I do believe that this was inconsistent with what normally happens with these types of motions. It was, my understanding, this would be assigned to a committee, and I think that that is what should have happened. So again, as Mr. Councilman Dewar had said, we would have an opportunity to actually discuss it in a less charged environment. And I think that we would have been able to come together and have some thoughtful discussion on appropriate actions of council members. I do agree with Councilman Dewar that in the position that, in which Councilwoman Hallam was sitting, she was representing all of us, and I'm not happy with that behavior. I don't, I am a mom. I'm 54. I am a mom, three kids. And so I use the word "behavior" because it is something that is reflective of all of us, and that is disappointing to me. And I think that if we were able to sit around instead of having the audience that is clearly skewed to one position, and who doesn't necessarily even take other comments seriously, the snickering and the laughing, this is very serious. And I'm new to council. I've been here since April, and I have seen some things that I would like the opportunity to discuss with my council members, not necessarily have everyone else be in on the discussion. We're sitting at the same table, and every, they're public meetings, they are public meetings and they aren't transparent. But when you are in a committee, just so you know, and everyone is welcome to come, we're sitting in a round table, and we can actually look our fellow council people in the eye, and we can have an impact. And we have had impacts. There are people that have changed their votes during those committee meetings, and there are people that have changed their attitudes. And I've appreciated that. I've appreciated the opportunity to give my side in looking someone in the eye. You can't look anyone in the eye in this particular setting. So, I wish we would have, President Katina, which I think...
And I'm not happy with that behavior. I don't, I am a mom, I'm 54, I am a mom, three kids. And so I use the word "behavior" because it is something that is reflective of all of us, and that is disappointing to me. And I think that if we were able to sit around instead of having the audience that is clearly skewed to one position and who doesn't necessarily even take other comments seriously, the snickering and the laughing, this is very serious. And I'm new to council. I've been here since April. And I have seen some things that I would like the opportunity to discuss with my council members, not necessarily have everyone else be in on the discussion. We're sitting at the same table and every, they're public meetings, they are public meetings and they aren't transparent. But when you are in a committee, just so you know, and everyone is welcome to come, we're sitting in a round table and we can actually look our fellow council people in the eye. And we can have an impact. And we have had impacts. There are people that have changed their votes during those committee meetings. And there are people that have changed their attitudes. And I've appreciated that. I've appreciated the opportunity to give my side and looking someone in the eye. You can't look anyone in the eye in this particular setting. So I wish we would have, President Katina, which I think this is an inconsistent way to have handled the motion since we're discussing inconsistency. I agree with Councilman DeMarco's assessment that Judge Housie clearly deserves respect, as does Ms. Hallam. Judge Housie, I have worked with him for 25 years. He is a, he is the epitome of a public servant. He was in the Assistant District Attorney's Office, he was the public defender, and now he's sitting as a judge. This isn't a joke! It's not up for debate! We voted for him! He won! Respect, that's what it is. So this means-to-an-end attitude that goes on and the bravado, it's just not appropriate. That's my vote. And I'm asking that if not now, to discuss some of these attitudes that don't belong in public office, then when? Thank you for the opportunity.
Councilman DeMarco?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of the council members have brought up some things where they've mentioned that foul language has been used on council before and nothing was done, okay? I would point out that there's a difference here. This isn't about foul language that was being used. It was a direct attack on a particular member of the oversight board. We have rules in council that any of us can be censored if we directly attack one of our colleagues. And that's why we're not supposed to refer to them, you know, by name or particularly, that's why you see folks in legislative bodies refer to these folks as "my friend," "my colleague," that sort of thing there. So there's a difference there. This isn't a matter of someone on council saying a bad word and someone not responding to it. It's a matter of a direct attack upon somebody and their reputation. And the second thing is, for the folks who, that is an issue for the language that was used on council and they have a problem with that, every one of us here has had the opportunity to offer a censure motion, you know, on regards to that. So when we talk about inconsistent treatment, you know, these folks have not seemed fit to introduce a particular censure motion in regards to that language. So I would just point that out. There is a difference. That's what the difference is, and that's why I sponsored this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Here ain't no one else, just one, do you want to make a statement or?
I want to vote.
Okay, I want to make a statement. Just real quick here, I've gone to the jail committee or the jail oversight board meetings. I wouldn't, Bethany is my replacement when I don't, when I'm not in attendance at those meetings. But I can tell you, from firsthand experience, the meetings that I went to were frustrating in the least. Calling someone a prick, unfortunately, at those meetings, I mean, I understand, I mean, things get heated and things can get out of hand very quickly. But those meetings are very frustrating. And unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of answers given. I tried to get answers out of the warden myself. Judge Housie stopped me and asked me to wait until after the meeting to get that information from Judge Housie, to get that information from the warden. The warden was supposed to stay after the meeting, he decided to run away from me. I couldn't get the answers that I waited for patiently after the meeting. I waited 25 minutes for the warden to wait and to speak to me privately because that's what Judge Housie promised me. Needless to say, that's a little bit disappointing. I know that has nothing to do with the censure motion tonight, but it's frustrating to the fact, when you go to these meetings and you're not getting answers. Oversight, look at the word, oversight, that's what it's supposed to be. And right now, I mean, obviously, the jail oversight board, looking at the entire board, it's a very big disappointment, in my personal opinion. And that's all I have to say on that. At this point in time, please call, go ahead, take the vote.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett?
Unequivocally no.
Mr. Bucowski?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Duer?
Stain.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulus?
No.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chappkas?
No.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritzio?
No.
Mr. Walton?
I'll abstain. And for the first time, for the first time during my tenure on council, I will, I will explain why I abstain. I'm at, I'm at Boo Boo here on council that uses real strong language and fights vigorously for what they believe. And I've called some folk some names. And I will do it again because I will fight vigorously for what I believe. I will fight vigorously for the people that I represent, and I'm not taking no bullshit off nobody. Not today, not next week, not next month, not next year, as long as I breathe air. I'm going to represent and do what I believe is right. So when I was asked, I told, I said, "I had to abstain because people that live in glass houses should not throw rocks." So I'm going to abstain.
Point of order.
Now, look here, if it had been me, and me, and my colleagues, having that conversation, I'd have handled it a little bit differently.
Robert's rules.
You got to come in and if you come messing with me, I'll do something to your ass.
Are you good? Done? Okay.
President Katina.
Hold on a second. Councilman DeMarco, you asked early on if it was personal or anything, if remarks shouldn't be addressed towards, I believe you got your admission right there on public record. So, I mean, so, there you go. Yes, or no, I'm sorry.
Eyes three, nose 10, with two abstentions, the motion fails.
Notification of contracts?
We have none.
Public comment on general items?
We do have a few. First up is Anna Ellenberger.
Good evening. My name is Anna, and my husband and I have been foster parents for almost three years in Allegheny County. I'm here to inform you of the gross abuse of power by Allegheny County CYF and their culture of intimidation. My husband and I are both very involved in the Pittsburgh community in many ways. I'm a physical therapist who specializes in women's health. I volunteered an after-school program for teens in East Liberty and support athletics among minorities in our city through the Black Girls Dubike Pittsburgh Chapter. My husband serves as a law enforcement officer, and we are both active in our diverse church community. We recently fostered a little girl who was African-American from infancy to about age two. However, CYF abruptly moved her to a different foster home for reasons which centered around unsubstantiated, false allegations made by caseworkers and an anonymous source that I made negative comments about the child who we cared for deeply and her mother. We believe that this act was taken in retaliation because we continually advocated for the child's basic needs. We asked for simple things, such as consistency surrounding her parental visits and allowing her time to take a nap. Our advocacy upset caseworkers, so with complete disregard for the child's basic needs of permanence and stability, they asked the courts to remove the child from our home, even though they acknowledged that she was safe and well-cared-for by us. They took advantage of the fact that foster parents have little to no rights in court and gave the court misleading information that we were not allowed to disprove, even though we had documents and evidence against their claims. The court told them to make the transition as gentle as possible. So what did CYF do? Without telling us their plan, they brought her to a parental visit, and as soon as it drove away, they texted us telling us she would not be returning. Since that day, more than four months ago, she has had no contact with the family or home that she lived with for the first two years of her life. During this entire ordeal, no one, not even DHS Director Aaron Dalton, would even acknowledge that this transition could be traumatic for the child. We have heard story after story of CYF causing unnecessary transitions for foster children and intimidating and retaliating against foster parents who advocate for the children. This harms some of the most vulnerable members of our community, many of whom are from racial minorities. In fact, African-American foster children are more likely to experience three or more transitions in the system than Caucasian foster children. Intimidation and retaliation by CYF causes disillusionment and burnout by those who are willing to foster, reducing the number of homes available for children who need them. We are asking for three things: that an external audit be conducted of how long children spend in the foster care system and the number of transitions they are exposed to, in particular among minorities; two, that an investigation be conducted on CYF's culture of intimidation and retaliation toward foster families; and three, that the system embraces the concept that transition and the breaking of bonds is trauma for these children. Thank you very much for your time and attention. I'll be emailing you our supplemental materials as well as the county executive. Thank you.
Next up is Billy Vaughn.
So, let me tell you guys, it's so crazy. I am a strong believer in God because I came down here to support the newcomer tax, right? But I say, you know what, I'm going to introduce myself because I'm an advocate, I'm a resident. I usually go to city council, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself. And at first, I'm like, you know, I feel like I'm listening to something in Japanese. I don't understand what's going on, I'm ready to go. But it's just so crazy that I'm here and I had no clue about the situation with Judge Housie and Bethany, no clue at all. I was just like, what's going on? So I do have a comment that I want to speak on that, but just introducing myself as like an advocate for residents for myself, even with the speaker just said before me, one of the biggest issues is organizations that are being funded through you guys' budget, there's issues with it actually, the support through the funding getting to us residents, you know? So who's doing the checks and balances audits for these organizations? And I'm just using my voice as a resident to speak on it. But one thing I want to say with, and I just want to give some middle ground to the situation with Bethany and Judge Housie, I didn't know anything about this. But what's funny is, you know, I support Bethany for what she does as supporting marginalized groups with the county jail. But it's funny that as someone who's been through the system, Schuman, the county changed my life, got my record expunged, I'm doing so many things for the city, and I actually had a job down here as a tipstaff. And through my whole journey of me changing, Judge Housie was my lawyer, Judge Housie helped me with my expungement, and Judge Housie hired me as a tipstaff. So what happens a lot, and when I was his tipstaff, he wasn't on that, he was not on that board. But what I see and what I'm learning is that, you know, they'll put the same people that's doing the work for the same, you know, the same cause against each other. So we got a, Judge Housie is actually supporting the same marginalized groups as you, and I will be one to say that. He's been there because I'm one. I'm one. And if you look at my name to see the wonderful work that I'm doing, he, he has been one that played a huge part in that. So we just can't let outsiders come in and infiltrate the system to change, and now we're fighting each other instead of the system that we need to be fighting. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Next. Last up is Andrea Williams.